Thanks Doug and good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dwayne Krishner and the CEO of OneSoft, where we predict pipeline failures, save lives and protect the environment with the assistance of data science and machine learning. I believe most attendees today have been following OneSoft for some time and understand the opportunities we are pursuing. So my objective today is to discuss our fiscal 2019 and Q1 2020 results and speak to a few issues that many investors have asked us about. First, let's review the numbers for fiscal 2019 and Q1 2020. Revenue increased by 1.1 million or 183% over Q1 last year. Along with revenue, comprehensive income and adjusted EBITDA swung by almost a million dollars compared to Q1 last year and were positive. Gross margin increased a bit this quarter to 80% of revenue. Cost of sales have fluctuated because of timing of implementation services to onboard clients. Over time, we expect this to stabilize in the 20% of revenue range, which is typical for successful SaaS companies. I should point out that cost of sales in our case includes royalty expense associated with our migration of Philips 66 IP to the cloud. So we think we're in good shape in meeting this ratio. Cash at quarter end totaled 9.7 million compared to 2.6 million a year ago and 10.5 million at fiscal 2019 year end. As this summary confirms, OneSoft is well capitalized with sufficient cash and no debt and based on our current burn rate to grow our business as planned without need to raise capital. This chart shows historic revenue growth by quarter. The blue bars represent annual recurring revenue or ARR. The green bars represent one-time revenue recognized upon completion of the P66 development project in 2018. As you can see, revenue has been somewhat lumpy quarter over quarter, but the dotted trend line is what we are looking to sustain into the future. We expect this will continue until we get more revenue and clients, which will tend to flatten out the peaks and valleys. As we explained in our 2019 year end report, we are focused on building ARR, which we believe is a key value driver for SaaS companies. And if you haven't already, I suggest you read our MDNA published on March 25th to understand the strategy we are following to increase shareholder value from a revenue multiple perspective. We anticipate that we will see other green bar one-time development revenues, particularly as we pursue new projects in our innovation lab. To summarize Q1 operational activities, we attended the PPIM trade show in February, which is the industry's largest annual trade show for pipeline integrity management professionals, which draws a global audience. Again, this year, we did not find any competitive machine learning solutions that were presented by anybody else. We had the opportunity at that conference to present our repair fraction white paper, which is the first of several studies we're assembling that quantifies the value proposition of utilizing machine learning and SIM. We can now demonstrate that SIM's pit-to-pit matching of anomalies can reduce the number of excavations by 15 or 20%, which represents significant savings for operators. We established a new innovation lab in February. Its focus is to enhance our technology to address the industry's plan to evolve from making prescriptive to performance-based decisions that are supported by data analysis rather than arbitrary factors such as half-life or 6 milliliters per year. We are now exploring several projects for the lab. So for the oil and gas markets, we're currently focusing on inline inspection or ILI data for midstream clients, but we want to expand SIM to upstream and downstream customers. And for pipelines that use direct assessment techniques to conduct integrity management on unpigged pipelines. We have potential to adapt our technology to municipal water and sewer markets, which we believe could significantly increase our total addressable market or TAM. During the quarter, we essentially completed onboarding of clients added in 2019. This caused 0.7 million to be transferred from deferred to earned revenue in the quarter. We enhanced SIM functionality and tools to automate onboarding of clients, which we expect will help us scale new sales and implementations with future clients. And regarding sales and marketing, our clients to date, except for the last one, have really been early adopters. We added a senior sales executive, Dan Tipton, in Q1, who is building the sales team that we think is necessary to scale the sales process to increase recurring revenue. And we have pivoted to focus sales activities on senior management and C-suite personnel, who are the ones who typically drive digital transformation strategies that are now starting to be implemented by pipeline operators. We have numerous pilot projects underway, some of which have been going for the past six to 12 months and some of which are just getting started. Our new pipeline, our sales pipeline is increasing and we expect to add new customers in 2020. And we expected double recurring revenue over last year. Regarding corporate developments, we presented at a couple of Toronto events in Q1 and the LD Microcap online investor conference. And we also had numerous meetings with potential investors as well, some of which have become investors in our company. We understand that from the TSXV that we traded over 14 million shares between January and April, so we're glad to see that activity. We haven't seen a lot of, or we've seen a lot of concern about disruption to our business lately, so we want to touch on that a little bit. First, about COVID-19. Our in-person meetings with clients and prospective customers ended during the last week of February, when things started to shut down. And we found that sales activities slowed for a few weeks, while many companies scrambled to restructure to operate with home-based employees and online tools. For the past month or so, we have returned to a busy plus state, although some activities and prospects with prospect and proof-of-concept projects are still expected to lag. However, our internal operations have not been hampered at all as our employees have been home-based since 2015. And we've always had the tools and the processes to work remotely and online. Client support has not been an issue for us at all. Our SIM clients were able to transition to home-based employees with only minor disruptions. Although prospective customers we are engaged with had more difficulty adapting to COVID, everyone is certainly gaining new appreciation for the benefits of cloud computing and being able to access the data they need to operate their pipelines from anywhere. The oil price decline also created some concerns. Our belief is that the price drop affects upstream and downstream companies more than midstream clients, which is where we are currently focused. Midstream distribution companies typically have long-term contractual commitments with assured revenues that are not linked to the oil price. We've had no indication of issues with our SIM clients other than watching their market caps decline as a result of being lumped in the oil and gas industry. And regardless of prices, operators must continue to manage their pipelines and adhere to regulatory compliance rules. Some people have expressed concern about a potential looming recession that may result from COVID. Our sense is that COVID will ultimately accelerate digital transformation in the future and assist future SIM sales. Historically, recessions have typically driven advances in technology because of necessity to increase efficiencies. And with low sustained oil and gas prices, cost savings become more and more important, which could also help to drive SIM sales. We believe this all bodes well for us. OneSoft is one of the few companies today that is actively recruiting new employees during COVID, while many are cutting back. We have noticed, we have noticeably more interest from data scientists seeking work as compared to pre-COVID, for example. And we suspect this is because development projects at other firms have been curtailed as a result of COVID freeing up the talent we'd like to hire. Although we can't predict the future fallout of COVID and how and when the economy will restart, we believe that the need for our solutions will only continue to increase. Interestingly, during Microsoft's most recent investor conference call on April 29th, they stated that Microsoft saw two years of digital transformation activity occur in the past two months. We believe regulatory compliance for operators will continue to get more stringent, resulting in operators increasing operational efficiencies, which SIM provides. The high value of digital transformation is much better understood today than pre-COVID, and this will likely accelerate post-COVID. So the bottom line is, we don't anticipate negative long-term change to OneSoft's business and we are using this time as an opportunity to double down on R&amp;D and to prepare to handle the increased activity that we expect will occur. So other than some current frustration and delays, we are sufficiently financed to withstand. We anticipate the temporary disruption we are experiencing today will ultimately become increased opportunity over the long term. So what is the outlook? Regulatory compliance mandates in the US that new rules will continue to positively impact OneSoft's sales. The US regulator FIMSA's mega rule takes effect on July 1st this year, although some relaxation of requirements has to December 31st because of COVID have been announced. So the mega rule addresses three main points, which are squarely in our sweet spot to address. Firstly, operators will require more sophisticated ILI data management and analysis. Secondly, certain practices that were only recommended in the past will now become mandatory. And thirdly, more pipeline will need to be operated within federal compliance standards, including necessity to adopt ILI data analysis for this additional pipeline infrastructure. Our innovation lab was set up to collaborate with Microsoft clients, prospective customers and industry experts and vendors to leverage our data science, machine learning and analytics models in pursuit of two main objectives. The first is to advance our IP and competitive mode, and the second is to increase our TAM and revenue opportunities. At this point, we're considering four project areas. The first is working with ILI tool vendors to automate many of the manual tasks that are being used today, which will speed up IMP, that's integrity management processes, and reduce costs. The second is to collaborate with various parties who have specialized engineering expertise that we can automate as software and incorporate into SIM. The third is to explore integration of additional data sets, such as data from IoT devices and chemical treatment programs that reduce internal corrosion events. And fourth, investigation to adapt our technology for use in industries other than oil and gas. And water and sewer is currently at the top of that list. So the mega rule requirements are driving the industry from this prescriptive to performance-based integrity management methodologies. So all oil and gas projects that we're considering for our innovation lab will consider future FIMSA regulatory requirements and align with the move to this performance-based data analytics. So currently, without sophisticated data analysis, operators use arbitrary worst-case indications of anomaly growth to determine intervals between successive ILI assessments. For example, half-life or 6 millimeter per year benchmarks as the basis to justify excavation and repair decisions. Performance-based integrity management requires sophisticated data management and analysis solutions like SIM provides. Data-driven risk assessments and analysis can prevent failures through smarter inspection scheduling. And as outlined in our repair fraction white paper, this can significantly reduce maintenance and repair costs for operators. Regarding corporate development matters, we suspect the recent decline in the company's share price occurred because of a combination of two factors. Number one, the COVID-19 disruption and concern over a potential looming recession post-COVID. And secondly, the perceived negative effect on our segment of the industry from the oil price decline. We intend to do everything we can to operate our business with a very strong focus on increasing shareholder value with the objective of regaining and exceeding the share price highs of 2019. This will include participation in various online investor and industry conferences, roadshow events when those become practical to resume, and other initiatives that target Canadian and US investors, particularly with investors who have specific interest in microcap companies that focus on AI, machine learning, SaaS companies and environmental, social and governance themes. Given our strong balance sheet of with 9.7 million of cash, no debt, current cash burn rate and strong sales pipeline, we believe we are very well-funded to grow our business with no need to raise additional capital. I would like to now do a short demo of our SIM software to give you a better sense for what we have developed. But first, let me explain the current technology and the processes that we are disrupting. So pipeline operators have been collecting data using inline inspection tools or PIGs for decades. So the tool is placed in the pipe and pushed downstream by the product flow, collecting data as it travels. These data sets are then processed by the tool vendor and sent to the pipeline operator in the form of very large Excel spreadsheets. Integrity management engineers at the pipeline operator then compare numbers in the most recent with the next most recent spreadsheet for that section of pipe to look for changes in anomalies and for things like corrosion growth. This is a lengthy, manual and tedious process. And because of the big data involved, only about 5% of the most critical anomalies end up being analyzed. So while integrity engineers today do a great job finding threats, the pipeline failures we hear and read about usually occur because of undetected threats that can only be found in this outlier data. SIM is disruptive to this current process because it uses machine learning to automatically ingest and analyze 100% of the data that's been collected over time and tracks growth of each anomaly from its first appearance on any pig run. SIM predicts when each individual anomaly will fail in the future. This simply cannot be done without using a cloud computing platform to analyze big data and machine learning, both of which are core to SIM. Before I play this two-minute demo, a little background as to what you're about to see. So following our attendance at Microsoft Accelerator and development of our prototype SIM solution, we engaged Philips 66 as our first beta client in late 2016, who gave us some ILI data to analyze. Philips is a very progressive company who had a comprehensive internally-developed software system running on Oracle. This was an on-premise solution, but it had no machine learning or data science. By late 2016, we completed our first version of SIM and identified a number of threats that P66's system did not identify. They then sent crews out to do excavations to inspect and verify our predictions based on our algorithms, which differed from their truth data. And as it turns out, our predictions were accurate. Philips became our first commercial client in January 2017 and gave us data for 10,000 miles of pipe. By the end of 2017, P66 learned more about the capabilities of machine learning and made the decision to give us their IP along with some funding to migrate their Oracle on-premise application to the Microsoft cloud. At that point, we engaged two additional pipeline operators in early 2018 and developed a horizontal application that addresses most functions required by pipeline operators worldwide by integrating our machine learning and predictive analytics with Philips system. We released the combined functionality in late 2018 and now own the IP for a full solution that can be used by pipeline operators globally. So our footprint increased dramatically from analytics only to an integrated cradle-to-grave cloud solution that handles operational logistics, regulatory compliance matters and predictive analytics. I will now explain what you are watching while this software demo runs. As you can see, SIM is 100% cloud and browser-based. It includes numerous dashboards and heat maps for role-based users. SIM presents the numbers in the spreadsheet as intuitive information in the context of the real world. We can use Cortana, let me just stop this. We can use Cortana or natural query language to find information. For example, show me the top 15 systems by anomaly count. SIM includes planning functions and a wide variety of reports, and data can be filtered as required by the operator. SIM is designed to allow users to simply drag and drop their Excel files into our application. And our algorithms automate the ingestion and the normalizing of that data so it can be used in the solution. Users can determine FIMSA mandated requirements and filter the data to match their own internal operating conditions to identify and categorize mitigation of threats as immediate 60-day, 180-day and so on to meet these regulatory compliances. Data is presented in three-dimensional intuitive formats and mapped to the real world. Anomalies on multiple pig runs are matched pit-to-pit. We can trace each anomaly to where it first showed up on any pig run, which could have been 20 years ago. This enables us to track its historic growth and determine with accuracy when it will fail in the future. Because SIM analyzes 100% of the data, we can also find patterns that aren't easily visible today, these patterns that lead to failure. This is not possible to do using Excel, where only a small fraction of the available data is considered. So imagine trying to understand this high consequence area, this threat next to the swimming pool in a populated subdivision by looking at numbers in a spreadsheet. A few points to wrap up. We have first mover advantage. We have commercialized the first machine learning solution to detect threats that cause pipeline failures, and we're not aware of any other machine learning solution that exists worldwide. We are the first company to have aggregated big data for the industry. So by now, we have analyzed tens of thousands of miles of pipeline, and that's generated learnings from more than 60 million features. No one else that we're aware of has this aggregation of learnings to date. And we have an opportunity to monetize this as data as a service or learning as a service offerings. So think the Google of pipeline integrity. Pipeline operators strongly support the shared learning concept that SIM provides. So all SIM users benefit from learnings across all operators without any operator having to share their confidential data. Our solution has been strongly validated by industry leaders. We are riding the digital transformation wave that is now starting to gain traction in oil and gas. We've established strong relationships with large companies like Microsoft and Wurley Engineering, who are now working with us on global sales opportunities. OneSoft has a clean share structure and sufficient capital to grow the business. Management is fully aligned with investors as insiders own 34% of the company. And lastly, management has had successful prior exits and delivered value to shareholders. That's it for my presentation. I'd like to thank you for your time and interest in attending. And Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you. Do we have any time for questions?
Yes, we have some time. We have a few questions before us. Question number one. Hi, how far along are you with getting big vendors to upload the data into SIM on behalf of your clients? Would you like me to repeat that?
No, I've got the question, thanks. At this point, we are, this is something we're still investigating. We are, I think I would just say we prefer not to talk about it until it's done. It's a project we're working on and we believe that, you know, at this point, it's looking, it's looking encouraging, but we still do not have really a timeline for when this would be completed and when it would be commercialized.
Okay, question number two. This is a little longer question. Can you elaborate on the following statement from the financial statement? Quote, "Other client's revenue was similar to last year with the exception of one client whose revenue declined year over year due to a new owner reallocating pipeline integrity management responsibility to other divisions for sections of pipelines managed under SIM last year," end quote. What does it mean exactly that one client changed responsibility for integrity management to another division and that other division decided not to use SIM? If so, why not? Was the client not satisfied or is it just a delay because the new division doesn't know SIM?
What actually happened? First of all, the amount of revenue we're talking about is not material. But what happened in fact was one of our clients got acquired by a large company who have their own integrity management process, who have not adopted SIM. And this acquiring company reorganized their business where a portion of the pipeline infrastructure is continuing to be managed by the team who were using SIM, so that portion continues. And a portion of the infrastructure they acquired moved over to their home office division, if you like. So they elected to continue to use the processes they were familiar with or that they're using for the rest of their infrastructure. So it's, that's what happened. Ideally, we hope in time that we're going to move this big company to SIM. we hope in time that we're going to move this big company to SIM completely. And this question won't arise again. But you know, the bottom line is it wasn't really material in the big scope of things, but that's what happened.
And at the present time, we have no other questions. If someone would like to ask a question, can you please type it into the question window on the right-hand side of your screen?
Sorry, Paul, I didn't want to interrupt. There are two new questions, I think, that may have come in.
Thank you. If you can see them, I cannot. So can you read them?
From Dean, I think it's, can you help us understand how resources are being allocated in the innovation lab? Is there one that is larger priority than the others? And another one is, do you expect deferred revenue to be regular, be a regular expectation?
First of all, with respect to the lab, we've staffed that up so that it is, you know, it's part of our company, but it's operating independently from normal operations. One of the problems a software company has is, you know, in trying to advance technology, what we don't want to do in the process is interrupt the daily flow of everything that needs to get done. So by having the lab operate independently, you know, the idea is this, we have a number of projects that look interesting. We're at the point now where we're doing preliminary market analysis, you know, all of this has to have, this has to move TAM significantly for us and, and those sorts of things and advance our IP. So all of that stuff's being done sort of independent from the rest of the organization. We'll then probably end up doing pilot projects, proof of concepts involving certain clients or prospective customers and/or other industry vendors. And once that's done, and we've decided to, that this, this is an avenue we want to pursue to add more functionality and so on. It's at that point that we'll turn that project over to our regular operations, if you like, to the development team so that they can slot and schedule that into the product roadmap and take the steps necessary to commercialize it. So, you know, think about it as a proof of concept incubator. And we, we need only a small team to do that with, you know, certain allocation of resources from time to time from the rest of the company. I think I answered that. The second one was, do we expect deferred revenue to continue? I would say yes, at this point, you know, what, what you've seen in the past year is probably going to continue. Where our clients, most of them like to write checks upfront, which we put into deferred revenue and then we, as we earn that revenue, that moves over to earned revenue. And that's all based on, you know, we really don't choose the timing for that. That timing is dictated by how quickly these, these operators load their ILI data logs and so on. So as they consume SIM in accordance with their own schedules, that translates to recognition of revenue for us.
Duane, if you, if you could consider just a couple more questions. That's one you may have answered, but I'll ask it again and allow you to comment. Why did one of your customers reduce their use of SIM last quarter?
I think I answered that. That's the, that's the customer who was the client who was acquired. Because, because they were, and the answer to that is because they were responsible for managing less pipeline infrastructure.
How many years out are you with respect to non-PIG-able pipeline monitoring software?
Yeah, we, we, you know, that's, that's not something that we're able to put a time on yet. But I think we'll start to see portions of that roll out, you know, towards the end of 2020, 2021. You know, we're, we're going to see bits and pieces of this functionality, functionality come out as it's ready. So it's something we've been working on for a while and we continue to work on it. But I would say to start watching, you know, sometime late in 2020.
One more question, how many years out are you at translating your software to water and rail industries?
Again, no timeline that we can provide with accuracy, but it is something that we are in the midst of investigating right now. So again, I would just, you know, you've got to stay tuned and we'll update you as we have more, more information that we can reliably forecast on.
Duane, I believe that's the end of the questions. So thank you very much for your answers. If anyone has any further questions or if you have questions at a later time, if you would email those to us, we would be more than happy to address them. And Duane, should they email those directly to you?
You bet.
Okay, so the email address would be D, like in Duane, KUSHNIRK, K U S H N I R U K at onesoft.ca. And you can also find that web or that email address on our website. So Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the meeting back to you.
And before you do that, Paul, I'd just like to thank everybody again for taking the time. And my email address is showing on the screen right now. Doug?
Thanks, Duane. And I'd also like to thank the entire management team. There's been some great progress in the past year. We truly look forward to the next time we can get together. Maybe it'll be in the same format. Maybe we can actually meet face to face. But once again, I'd like to thank everybody for attending and your support is very much appreciated. So we'll call the meeting to an end at this point. Thank you.